All right, we're going to call the special town meeting to order. Constable, can we have a count of the voters present, please? We have 304 voters, we have a quorum. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And would the clerk please read the warrant?
Yes, I will. I should have brought my cheetahs. Can I use yours? Thank you. Good evening. Plymouth SS to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs, and to meet in the Town Hall in said Whitman on Monday, the 30th day of October 2023 at 7:30 PM, then and there, to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 15. And you are hereby directed to serve the warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town 14 days at least before the day of said meeting. Here or fail not, and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the Town Clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting, given under this hand this third day of October 2023. Signed by the Board of Selectmen, Dr. Carl F. Kowalski Chair, Daniel L. Salvucci Vice Chair, Justin R. Evans Clerk, Sean M. Kane Member, and Laura Howe Member. And then the warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of within warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of town with two in each precinct, signed on October 12th, 2023 by Constable Christine M. May Stafford. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just to review procedures here, all voters must sit in the designated areas. Non-voters must seek permission of the moderator to be here before entering the hall, and must sign into the clerk's office, and must sit in the designated section of the balcony unless I've given them permission to sit in the voting section. They may not speak except with my permission, and they may not vote. All amendments must be submitted in writing and signed. Massachusetts general laws, Articles 1, 2, 3 of the town bylaws, and Roberts Rule of Order govern the conduct of the special town meeting. In order to speak, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Make it obvious, it's a big room, I can't sometimes see the people in the back so well. Once recognized, please stand and go to the nearest microphone. There's one up here in the balcony, there's one down here on the floor. And once at the microphone, please state your name and your address. Please confine your comments to the article or question that's on the floor. You may not speak for a second time on an article or question until everyone who wishes to speak for the first time has done so. I'd like to recognize the Finance Committee, these folks who are sitting here in front of me. They review all the financial-related articles and make recommendations to the town meeting on that. They're very important to the function of this town. Please join me in thanking them. Ms.
Mary Beth Carter, 896 Auburn Street, Town Administrator. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight to attend this very important special town meeting. I know how busy everyone is with family, jobs, children's activities, commitments, and life in general. I also realize that taking time out of your busy schedules to attend this evening may not have been convenient for you tonight. However, it's so important to have the input from as many voters as possible at these town meetings. Many times in the past, we have had to delay the start of a special town meeting or annual town meeting several minutes while we pleaded with our viewers to come down to Town Hall so we could meet the required quorum and move forward with the necessary business at hand. I invite you all to come back and attend the annual town meeting in May. It would be wonderful if we saw this kind of attendance at all the special and annual town meetings. Again, thank you. This year, the special town meeting is being held a little earlier than other special town meetings have been in the past. Since free cash has not yet been certified and made available, you will notice that the funding source for many of tonight's articles is from prior articles which have been turned back by departments that made the original request, the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District and the DPW. The unspent amounts from previously voted articles have been certified to the accountant as excess funds, and therefore, they are eligible to be appropriated and transferred for another use. Thank you.
Article 1, Prior Year Fiscal Bills. To see if the town will vote to transfer $1,317.21 from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to reimburse the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District for the construction of a parking lot at the rear of the Duval Elementary School is authorized under Article P. 1 of the special town meeting held on July 27, 2020 to pay the following prior fiscal year bills. Plymouth County Sheriff's Department, $896. NBM, $221.75. Andreas Police Supply, $199.46, or take any other action relative thereto is their motion. A second? Seeing none. Since this is a prior year fiscal bill, this does require a nine-tenths majority to pass, so if the vote is not unanimous, we'll have a standing count. All in favor of Article 1 say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 1 passes unanimously. Article 2, Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Adjustment. To see if the town will vote to transfer $9,896 from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay costs of exterior envelope repairs, resurface sections of the exterior finishing and insulation system at the high school authorized under Article S. 13 of the annual town meeting held on May 1, 2017 to Article 2, Budget Line 6, assessor salaries of the May 1, 2023 annual town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there a motion? Second? Discussion of Article 2. Ms. Landeville?
Ms. Landeville, 20 Harvard Street. I have a question as to why the vote is the way it is with the Finance Committee, and I also question, will this amount set the pace for May's salaries town meeting as a starting point? It's only a one-shot deal we're getting this money back from.
Ms. Carter?
Okay. This article represents a shortfall in the assessor's salary line...
Can't hear.
Can you hear? Okay. This article represents a shortfall in the assessor's salary line which was unanticipated when the fiscal 2024 budget was finalized. This is necessary due to employment changes and new hire negotiations. So yes, this will now be the basis. The market right now, finding somebody who was qualified for the position did cost more than what we were paying for the position at the time it was budgeted. So yes.
Is this person a full-time person?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, we only get this one-shot deal to use, and then we got to figure out where it's going to come from come May?
In May, we add this total budget for the year including this increase into the budget. That is correct.
Other comments on Article 2? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rick Anderson, 237 Stetson Street, Chair of the Finance Committee. Just to address your question regarding the vote of the Finance Committee, this department did come before the Finance Committee to seek authorization for additional funds for the salary line, and it was agreed last year that we would support an article at this special town meeting for the remaining balance of the appropriation. So it was not a unanimous vote, but the members who voted against were not in favor of using this article to fund a salary line. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Other questions on Article 2? All right, all in favor of Article 2, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3, Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Adjustment. To see if the town will vote to transfer $15,000 from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay costs of the repairs for the Duval School roof is authorized under Article 46B of the annual town meeting on May 2, 2016, and Article 15 of the special town meeting held on December 11, 2017 to Article 2, Budget Line 27, library salaries of the May 1, 2023 annual town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion? Second? All right, discussion of Article 3? Ms. Landeville?
So this is the same scenario as the last one?
Ms. Carter?
You people can laugh all you want to, but you know what? When you get hit with the tax bill, and your honor makes...
Ma'am, please confine your questions to the moderator, please.
So this article represents an unanticipated shortfall in the library budget primarily due to senior employees transferring to different positions within the library. So they had been at the library for several years, they were at higher steps, and then they moved to other positions. And this was after the town meeting as well.
And again, why the vote from the Finance Committee?
Mr.
So speaking specifically to this warrant article, and actually, many of the other warrant articles that are not unanimous, there are members of the Finance Committee, we had a lengthy discussion about the use of funds from unexpended funds for previous articles, and there seems to be just, not in best practices, on how the money can just sit unused for an undetermined amount of time. So it is the hope of the board, and the hope of the Finance Committee to perhaps get some policy on a length of time that this money can sit before its return to the general fund. So that was why, it was a unanimous vote. But the majority of the Finance Committee does support this article.
Other questions on Article 3? All in favor of Article 3, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, DPW Wing Snow Plow. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $21,400 to be transferred from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay costs to replace the telephone system at the Duval Conley and Whitman Middle Schools as authorized under Article 17 of the annual town meeting held on June 2, 2021 for the purpose of purchasing and installing a 10-foot mid-mount wing snow plow to be mounted on a six-wheel dump truck, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion? Motion, a second. Discussion of Article 4? All in favor of Article 4, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 4 is adopted unanimously. Article 5, The Fire Department Portable Radio Replacement Grant. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $9,138.65 to be transferred from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay Whitman's share of the cost of spray. Resurface the outdoor Whitman-Hanson Regional School District tract is authorized under Article 46 of the annual town meeting held on May 6 and June 17, 2019 for the purpose of providing the town's matching share, $9,138.65, of the cost of replacement of portable radios, with the remainder of such cost to be paid using the $191,911.74 total AFG grant awarded to the Fire Department, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 5? All in favor of Article 5, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 5 is adopted unanimously. Article 6, The Fire Department New Brush Truck Grant. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $14,090.72 to be transferred from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay Whitman's share of the cost to spray. Resurface the outdoor Whitman-Hanson Regional School District tract is authorized under Article 46 of the annual town meeting held on May 6 and June 17, 2019 for the purpose of providing the town's matching share of $14,090.72 of the cost of a new brush truck, with the remainder of such cost to be paid using the $281,814.28 total AFG grant awarded to the Fire Department, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 6? All right, all in favor of Article 6, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 6 is adopted unanimously. Article 7, Fire Department Training Grant. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $5,554.29 to be transferred from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to pay Whitman's share of the cost to spray. Resurface the outdoor Whitman-Hanson Regional School District tract is authorized under Article 46 of the annual town meeting held on May 6 and June 17, 2019 for the purpose of providing the town's required matching share, $5,554.29 of the cost of training to include emergency vehicle operators course, engine operations, and ladder operations, with the remainder of such cost to be paid using the $111,085.71 total AFG grant awarded to the Fire Department, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 7? All in favor of Article 7, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 7 is adopted unanimously. Article 8, Technology Municipal Fiber Grant. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $36,459 to be transferred from the balance of unexpended funds remaining under the town's original appropriation to reimburse the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District for the installation of a chairlift at the Duval Elementary School as authorized under Article P. 2 of the annual town meeting held on July 27, 2020 to pay the town's portion of the total project. STM 103023. The cost of $238,922.81 to install a new fiber optic network connecting all town buildings, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 8? All in favor of Article 8, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 8 is adopted unanimously. Article 9, Cable Access Account. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $142,793.50 from the Reserve for Appropriation Cable Access Account to fund PEG access services in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53F and 3/4, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 9? All in favor of Article 9, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 9 is adopted unanimously. Article 10, Little Comfort Circle. To see if the town will vote to accept Little Comfort Circle as a public way as constructed to meet planning board and DPW requirements, and as shown on a plan to file with the Town Administrator entitled "Little Comfort Estates Prepared by Silva Engineering Associates, PC," which plan is originally dated October 25, 2022, revised on March 13, 2023, and endorsed, i.e. stamped, on April 5, 2023, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion, a second? Discussion of Article 10? Sir?
Ms. Margaret Hobb Kimball, 877 Auburnville Way. Does this only include Little Comfort Circle? What about the Second Street and the development? Should it be listed in the article?
Ms. Carter?
I'm sorry, the question was, should...
I believe it's Captain Alan Way. It's part of the development. You're only approving Little Comfort Circle, which isn't the complete development. So should this be tabled to the next town meeting, so we can get the complete development approved?
This was submitted by the developer as Little Comfort Circle, and both the planning board and the DPW have confirmed that the requirements have all been met. So that's all the information. I don't know, is Mr. Egan here this evening? So this is for Little Comfort Circle.
Any other discussion of Article 11? I'm sorry, of Article 10? All in favor of Article 10, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 10 is adopted. Article 11, Capital Stabilization. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to the Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to amend? We have a motion to amend Article 11.
The motion to amend is to, I'd like to change it, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 5B, or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second on the amendment? All right, discussion of the amendment? Yes, sir?
I can try to explain it first, if that...
If that would be helpful, then go ahead.
So when town meeting was posted, we didn't have the final new growth numbers. As of Friday, we estimate that the new growth numbers are going to be 538, well, as of Friday was $540,000. Our principal assessor has since amended down to 538,033. In the annual budget this year, we projected $450,000. So we can conservatively say, there's going to be at least $75,000 additional that we can appropriate at this town meeting. DOR hasn't certified it yet, so we don't want to use the full $88,000 and change.
Does that answer your question?
Bob Kimball, 877 Auburnville Way. Previous town meeting, we weren't allowed to add any money to an article that wasn't printed on the warrant. Why can we do it this time?
My understanding is that because it was a sum of money, not a specific dollar value, but is that correct, Michelle?
Good evening. Michelle McNulty, Town Council. Yes, you are correct, there is not a dollar amount here, so therefore, it has to be amended to put a sum in, and therefore, the amendment is appropriate.
Other discussion of the amendment, Mr.
Just for town meeting, the Finance Committee met prior to town meeting and got the amendment and voted for this article, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee for the amendment is to 9-0. Thank you.
Further discussion of the amendment? All in favor of amending Article 11, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Okay. Article 11 is amended. Discussion of the amended article? All in favor then of Article 11 as amended, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 11 is adopted unanimously. Article 12, Right to Farm. To see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Whitman general bylaws by adding the following right to farm bylaw to be codified in a manner consistent with the existing Ms. Carter?
Motion to waive the reading of this article?
We have a motion to waive the reading of the article. Do we have a second? All in favor of waiving the reading of the article, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? I'm not going to read it. Ms. Carter?
Okay. This general bylaw encourages the pursuit of agriculture, promotes agriculture-based economic opportunities, and protects farmlands and forests within the Town of Whitman by allowing agricultural uses and related activities to function with minimal conflict with the butters and town agencies. The Right to Farm article is being presented as a result of the Peaceful Meadows Auction and the acquisition of agricultural land by John Hornster of Hornster Farms in Norwell. The Peaceful Meadows Ice Cream Stand was a landmark in Whitman since the early 1960s. According to Mr. Hornster, he plans to bring the cows back to Whitman, and this property will once again become a working dairy farm. Thank you.
Discussion of Article 13? All in favor of Article 13, say yes?
Yes!
I'm sorry, Article 12, Article 12. See, I skipped forward here because I didn't read it. All in favor of Article 12, say yes?
Yes!
Opposed, no? Article 12 is adopted unanimously. There was no vote on Article 13, just to be clear about that. But here it is. Article 13, Whitman Middle School Building Project. To see if the town will vote to approve the $135,289,673,000 borrowing is authorized by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of demolishing the existing Whitman Middle School and constructing a new Whitman Middle School at 104th Ave in the Town of Whitman, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The project, which said new school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended in the direction of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, is determined by the MSBA, and any project cost to the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1/63 and 31/100 of a percent of eligible approved projects' costs as determined by the MSBA, or to the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA, or take any other action relative thereto. And we have a motion. I move that the town hereby approve the $135,289,673 borrowing authorized by the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of demolishing the existing Whitman Middle School and constructing a new Whitman Middle School at 104th Ave in the Town of Whitman, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. The project, which said new school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an education facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years, and for which the district may be eligible for school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, said amount to be expended in the direction of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, that the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1/63 and 31/100 of a percent of eligible approved projects' costs as determined by the MSBA, or to the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that the approval of the district's borrowing in this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its allocable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Law 59, Section 21C, Proposition 2 and 1/2, and the amount borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion of Article 13. Mr. Small?
Frederick Small, 87 Hilltop Road. I'm also the chairman of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee. First, I'd like to introduce some of the folks that are here, as far as our committee members go. Tell you a little bit that we've been meeting since 2019. We've examined one story, two stories, three stories, five through eight, six through eight, with an auditorium, without an auditorium. The building committee has been very diligent in doing a lot of exploring. We didn't always agree, but at the end of the day, the project you're going to see is the project that was voted on by the majority of the committee. We have with us, from the building committee, Kathelino Teener is our vice chair, we have our superintendent of schools, Jeff Simonak, George Ferro, our assistant superintendent, Brandon Frost, the Whitman Middle School president, principal, geez, not president. Mary Beth Carter sits on the committee, Bob Curran, who we all know, Don Essen, I'm not sure where Don is. Oh, there he is in the back. Justin Evans, who sits on the committee, Josh McNeil, who sits on the committee as well, Rich Polkinen. Rich was nice enough to provide his voice as well, that many of you may have heard on some of the videos. Crystal Regan could not be with us. She's one of our educators at the middle school. Chris Scriven, also a school committee member, sitting right there. Beth Stafford, who is also on school committee and chairs it, and John Stambrook, our business manager, is here with us. From the school committee, Beth Stafford, Chris Scriven, Steve Boyce, Michelle Boujolay, Don Byers, Steve Klutman, Glenn DeGravio, David Forth, Hillary Niffen, and of course, myself. And we do have some of the folks here with us. Our project manager is Colliers International. We have Mike Carroll here with us from that group, as well as our designer. We all know how beautiful our high school turned out. It's the same architect, AI3. Troy worked on that project with us, you know, way back when we were meeting in the Portables. Way, way back. Julie's with him as well. So we thank you, we're going to go right into a short video presentation, and we're available for any questions and comments that people might have. Thank you. We appreciate you coming out in the cold and the rain.
Hello and welcome. My name is Jeff Simonak, the superintendent of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, and I'd like to share with you the proposal for our new Whitman Middle School project. The Whitman Middle School project began over three years ago with a statement of interest to the MSBA and a comprehensive feasibility study. As part of this process, educational visioning and programming sessions were held with all stakeholders, including faculty, staff, administration, students, building committee, and school committee members. During this entire process, development of 13 different building options arose. After many meetings and a collaborative effort between the school committee members and committee members, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee selected the new committee members, the Whitman Middle School Building Committee selected the new construction option of a 675-student middle school designed for grades five through eight, which also includes a 450-seat auditorium. The plan constructs an entirely new building behind the existing to avoid direct disruption to current students and staff. Once complete, the existing will be demolished, resulting in a much more open campus with numerous community benefits. Traffic flow for buses, vehicles, and walkers will be significantly improved, as well as increasing and distributing parking to better accommodate faculty, staff, and visitors during the school week and events at night or on the weekends. The project includes the reconstruction of four existing athletic fields while maintaining town-owned fields and incorporates a defined natural fitness path for walking or running. The design draws inspiration from the backdrop of trees that surround the site, affording student opportunities for direct connections to their local ecology. The new three-story middle school is organized such that community spaces like the auditorium, dining space, and gymnasium are easily accessible during public events. Along the front of the building, the administration suite overlooks the campus for improved safety and security. The main entrance is flanked by the auditorium, which will serve as an asset to the community and support the district's music and performing arts educational program. Inside, the 450-seat auditorium will include a 1,600-square-foot stage, the appropriate acoustics, lighting, and technology necessary for a middle school performance space. Connecting the auditorium to the dining space is a reimagined Main Street for student commons that includes space for interaction and to display Whitman's pride and heritage. This multi-story atrium brings inviting natural daylight to the center of the building through a direct connection to an outdoor courtyard. The courtyard is enclosed on three sides, keeping users protected during the day while maintaining access to the adjacent wetlands for real-world learning opportunities. At the southern end of Main Street is an open dining space that is appropriately sized to accommodate all daily seatings, after-school programs, and large gatherings. From here, the secondary entrance leads back to the front of the building, facilitating outdoor access to an engaging public plaza for dining opportunities and recess. The compact building plan is positioned for optimal solar orientation and is designed to be 100% electric and solar-ready. Integrating sun-shading devices within a highly effective building envelope are necessary to migrate solar heat gain, reduce thermal loads, and reduce the building's annual operating costs. The proposed materials are durable, low maintenance, and recyclable, contributing to the project's sustainability goals. The gymnasium contains three teaching stations and a bleacher seating capacity for approximately 160 spectators, with additional viewing possible from around the court. A 2,000-square-foot multipurpose wellness space, the equivalent size of our existing turf gym, will enhance the students' daily fitness experience and community use on the weekends with modern amenities, natural daylighting, and direct access to the interior. Of course, the middle school will be incomplete without classrooms that are tailored to meet the evolving, modern learning environment. Technology, storage, natural daylight, ventilation, air conditioning, proper acoustics, and direct access to small-group learning spaces are all integrated into every classroom to ensure a healthy and productive school day. Each grade level is situated within its own wing, her neighborhood, and is organized to facilitate team teaching and collaboration. A layering of functional learning space maximizes usable area without increasing building size. These open and flexible academic wings include resource rooms and collaboration spaces necessary to support a diversity of learning types, integrated special education, and informal knowledge sharing. Outside of core academics, the project innovation lab, performance technology lab, and art classroom provide necessary space for the type of hands-on exploration critical for a middle-school-aged student. These project-based labs are on the two-story media center positioned at the heart of the school and another resource for community functions or committee meetings. Altogether, this compact design packs the essential educational and community needs into a new Whitman Middle School that will endure for the next 50 years and beyond. For more information and to stay informed, please visit our project website at www.wmsproject.org. Thank you.
Questions on Article 13? Ms. Landerville.
Is this the total final amount? The 135, the, yeah, the one, one, where am I here? 135, 289, 673?
Mr. Small.
Yes, that is the number that has been capped by MSBA. However, when we submitted our paperwork and MSBA had their meeting on October 25th, they also had given us a maximum grant amount from the original project or the original submission. That changed. Prior to that, we were looking at $432 a square foot in reimbursement. That's MSBA's formula of eligible square footage that's reimbursed for both site work and building cost. At the meeting prior to them voting our project, they changed their numbers, and they went up. So they are now allowing on building cost $550 per square foot and $50, $5 for site work on square footage. Total of 605. All well and good, but what that means is about $13.6 million back to the town of Whitman. That's $13.6 million less than what we will have to borrow for this project. That was a very, very welcome gift that we received from the state, and we are truly thankful for that.
So there'll be no further coming back to the town looking for another $2 million, $3 million, $1 million?
Nope, because quite frankly, it would be my intention, the same as when I was on the building committee for the high school. We came in on time and on budget.
Okay, what does this do to the average taxpayers?
We have, if not, we have the exact numbers. Or I shouldn't say the exact numbers. We have a snapshot based upon the average household, I don't know what's in the feedback, based upon the average household, okay, at a 5.5% interest rate, because we don't know what the bond rate's going to be when we go out to bond, but based upon those conditions, the average household would see a $1,264 increase the first year. It would be declining from there on in.
By how much?
Well, the average is $860.71 a year. I believe after the first 10 years, we hit that average and then start going down from there, if I'm correct, Mary Beth?
So is that $1,300 based on, say, a $400,000 assessment of your home?
$420,000 assessment. Yeah, but I'm blind. Yeah.
Do you mind?
No.
Ms. Carter?
No. So we did this calculation out, and it is for 30 years on level principle. The first year, for an average home assessed at $420,530 is $1,264.21. The last payment is $502.59 for that average home.
How does it decrease?
So the second year would be $1,237. The third year is $1,211. 1159, 1132, 1106.
Why isn't it going to be based evenly across 30 years?
That would be level principle, and we had a discussion about that. If the town were to go with a level-principle debt schedule, it would cost the town $19 million extra in interest. It is, the most cost-effective way is to go with a level principle. So 25.
So in 10 years, you're at 9...
975, 42.
In 10 years, you're at 975, 42, and in 15 years, you're at 843, 22. So as you can, you know, gather, to go average would cost you the same, but it would cost the town $19 million more, and it would reduce the capacity of the town to have the ability to put on projects as this one's coming down in cost. So therefore, when you get to, say, year 15, you're 843. You're already lower than what that average would have been.
So has there been any accommodations made for the seniors in this town trying to hang on to their homes, never mind an additional $1,200, and then only a few bucks less the next year, and the next year, and the next year?
I'm sure that every consideration would be made to help with any programs that would be available from the Commonwealth of Mass., etc., you know, to help seniors, you know, with abatements and whatnot, as there should be no matter what.
So we're going with the highest rates first, transitioning down, because it's going to save money. Most of us in this auditorium are going to be gone by the time that 30 years...
I may be gone, I don't know. I hope not, but in 30 years, I'll probably be gone.
Ms. Byers.
Don Byers, 20 Russell Road. Two quick questions. The year one that is up there with that dollar amount, if you can explain with a ballot vote happening on November 4th, is year one, you know, December of this year that that full amount would hit, or is there an anticipation of when that full amount a taxpayer could expect? And second, if the ballot vote is approved, when would the middle school be expected to open? So those two dates that would impact the home?
Expected opening is September of '27, and the bond or the full amount of payment would not be due until we actually go out for bond. So what typically happens in a construction project such as this is we use what's called bands, band, bond anticipation notes. So those are issued to pay for the construction and pay as we go. MSBA has changed their formulas, so they're actually chipping in as we go as well. When we get to the point where now it's the entire amount owed, then we would take out the bond itself, and that's when the large money would kick in.
And that would be anticipated in 2027, when the building is fully complete?
Yeah, when the project is complete, so.
Okay, so it wouldn't be this year with that?
Wouldn't be this year with that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bob Kimball, 877 Alvinville Way. The way I read the article, it's asking for approval to bond, borrow $135 million. Why aren't, why doesn't the article say we'd borrow the $89 million?
If you read further down the article, it shows the 63.61% MSBA maximum reimbursement. So that's where it reference, references the MSBA numbers, and that's of eligible costs. When we delve down further and you get into what eligible costs are, we're not getting the 63.31%, but we end up with the $59,159, which is obviously less than 63.31% of $135 million. There are certain things they pay for, certain things they don't pay for. The auditorium, for instance, you know, is not a covered component. They look at class size, they might look at a prep room and say, "We'll give you 120 square feet for that. We won't give you 140 that you've requested."
No, I understand that, but the question is, why, if I allow you to borrow up to $135 million, the project goes over, you have authorization to borrow $135 million. Why aren't we just authorizing the $89 million?
This is the language that MSBA requires. Total Whitman taxpayer is $76,129, $129,555. So that is what we're asking for, is the total Whitman taxpayer contribution. As the article's written, it does reference the percentage amounts coming off of that 135, so that's where you come up with the difference, so to speak. You're allowing us to borrow the 135 less the amount of the grant, and this is MSBA's required language in a debt exclusion. I don't know, do you have anything additional, Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Kane?
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. Well, somebody who's passionate about local government, it's great to see so many people here tonight. Thank you for coming up to help us make this hard decision. Appreciate it. We, we worked with a financial consultant to put together a chart that you're about to look at. I think many of you probably got a copy as you walked in. Hopefully it'll be on the screen soon. It's, we worked with a financial consultant who'd come in and give us some, some support on our debt management. So this chart that you have, hopefully you have in front of you, but also up on the screen, it's a big picture analysis of our debt over the last 20 years and how things came to be this way, and then what happens if we do approve the middle school, and then looking forward into the next 20, 30 years. So I know this stuff can be difficult to process, but hopefully this chart will make things a little bit more understandable. Well, first, if you look at the, at 2025 and you look at the blue bar, that's the first year, roughly the first year, depending on how the project goes, of the, of the middle school. That's, as, as Mr. Small said, it's a little bit over $1,200 for the average, for the people who own an average-sized house in Whitman. So you can see how it decreases over time, over the next 30 years, until that last payment 30 years from now is just over $500. The second thing I'd like to draw your attention to is the red line. The red line on the chart is our debt management policy. So a couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen adopted a debt management policy to help us, one, we kind of knew that we're going to be taking on some, some projects like the DPW and the middle school, and we wanted to look at best practices as, as far as what are we supposed to be at, roughly. So specifically, our debt management policy reads as this. Excluded debt service costs should be less than 12% of the tax levy at all times. So the led, the red line on the chart represents 12% today. Today, we take in about $30 million, meaning of the taxes that we collect, that's about $30 million. So 12% of $30 million is $3.6 million. So the best practice according to a debt management policy says collectively, we should pay about $3.6 million or a limit of $3.6 million out in our excluded debt. Before the DPW in 2023, we only have about $1 million that we're paying out, because we really have very little debt. When you look back 20 years ago, we weren't collecting $30 million as part of our tax levy. It was only about $15 million. So this graph takes that into account. We're looking at how much we collected and the proportional relationship between our excluded debt. And then 20 years from now, you know, if we're going up 2.5% a year, we'll be collecting a little over $50 million. So again, this chart takes that into, into consideration. If we look back 20 years, you can see that our debt peaked at about 2012. That was at 13%. And then you can see that it steadily declined until 2023, where it's only at 3.6% right now. When the high school, when we funded the new high school in 2008, you can see where it comes on the books. Just for comparison purposes, the high school represented 4.2% of our tax levy at that time. And when the new police station came on in 2012, that represented 5.2% of the tax levy at that time. By comparison, the first year of the middle school when it comes on is just over 21%.
Yes, ma'am. Point of order.
I just question whether this is following rules of comments being specifically related to the warrant item, and if I will be able to put up a question regarding my comment?
This is something that the, the committee has come up with. I, I would agree that it's in the interest of the town to have this information. I don't, I don't know where, what, what the source of your information is, but if, if you'd like to present a chart, we could probably do that.
Simply your question about whether this is, if this also...
It does.
Yeah, and I think understanding, I think before we make what would, will be the biggest investment in the town's history, we should have an understanding of our, our debt. Again, how things kind of came to be this way and the repercussions if we do suppo- Again, how things kind of came to be this way and the repercussions if we do support it moving forward. Um, so thank you for your patience, but... When we ask the question, why is the middle school project higher than, say, the high school project that came on in 2008? And there are just some obvious costs. Building costs are up, the reimbursement from MS, MSBA, even though we got a little bit more recently, it's still less than what we were getting back for the high school. And this project is not a regional project, although we are fully regionalized at this time. This is a Whitman project. The high school was a Whitman and Hanson project, so Hanson was paying about 40%. So those three things are really what's driving up the cost of the middle school. Um, with this in mind, we recommended that it's a 30-year bond, not a 20-year bond, to help in that case. That's why it's spread out of 30 years, not the typical 20. Um, and then just lastly, if you look at the, at the future, um, the DPW's gonna, the impact of the DPW is gonna hit the taxpayers soon, and then Solskjaer Votec actually is gonna come before...
Yes, sir.
If you don't...
It's not a point of order.
Sorry. If you don't mind, just let me kind of finish the presentation and we'll take questions. Thank you. Um, yeah, the DPW is gonna come on the books shortly, Solskjaer Votec is gonna come before the town and ask for us to consider a new building project. In addition, we also have, obviously, the Duval and Conley and other town buildings that have capital needs. So this, this chart will hopefully help you gauge, um, the repercussions of those things moving forward. So, it's a difficult decision. Two of our strategic priorities are education and finance. We want to provide high-quality education for us, for our kids, and we want to, we want to be responsible with our finances. As you can see, there is some tension here, so hopefully this gives you some, some better information to make, to make this decision. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, sir. Al Smith, Old Coach Road. What is the total increasing in, uh, property tax between the school and the DPW combined? What's it gonna cost the average homeowner?
Ms. Carter?
So the $17.8 million that was voted last year for the DPW, um, has the first year payment, this is a 20-year level principal debt, $352.28, the first year down to $170.39, with an average of $233.11 over the life of that 20-year debt. That again is for the average home assessed at $420,530. And then, you know, with the figures that we just went over with the, um, the middle school, the first year being the 126421 down to 502, with an average of 86049.
Okay, thank you.
The first year is roughly about, um, 1,600.
Ma'am, in the red?
It'd be less than that, though. You get to go down, go down three or four years and then...
He said the first. Well, actually, yes.
The first year of the high school, of the middle school would be about the third or fourth year of the DPW game.
Right, these were both, um, just projected as if we were going out to borrow on this, you know, right away, but, um, and of course, these, these are both estimates because of the, um, the rate. We don't know exactly what rate we'll get in three years when they go out to bond on the school. It definitely, you know, it could be, it could be lower than what we projected here. The school is based on the, um, district's rating, and the DPW is based on the town's rating.
Ma'am?
Leela Donovan, 81 Old Mansion Lane. I'm wondering if there's anyone here from the assessor's office who can maybe explain the tax exempt options that are available to people in town?
Is this related to this, to this particular article?
I think that's helpful information for people to know as we make this decision.
Based upon this, let me ask a question about senior...
Yeah, okay. Did we have anybody who can address that?
We have the Assistant Town Administrator, who was the former assessor, and I'm not sure if we have the current assessor here with us.
Kathy Keefe, I live in Hanson, but I'm the Assistant Town Administrator, former assessor. So there are several programs that taxpayers can make themselves available to for real estate tax exemptions. Um, there are different criteria depending on the type of clause under the Massachusetts laws that you would be applying for. We have them for seniors, veterans, uh, blind folks, um, so readily assessors at the assessor's office. You can give them a call tomorrow morning and they can, if you perhaps explain what your particular financial statement or status is with them, they would be able to guide you with that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
Julia Sheehan, 38 Beale Ave. In the case that we were to turn this down, if we were to vote this down, do you have information about the cost to taxpayers and the repairs to the existing building?
Mr. Small?
The estimate we have for the repairs, and it's a repair only, is about $60 million. So that's what it would cost. It wouldn't add anything as far as educational space or do anything for the educational values of the building. It would just be updating your HVAC, a new roof, electrical, et cetera.
As a follow-up, can I just ask then, what would the cost per month to the taxpayer be? It wouldn't be that much less than just doing the new building and having all those educational benefits, right?
Well, it would have to be bonded differently, so it would be a 20-year bond. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. Uh, do you have the 60 million? I'm sorry? Yeah, uh... So the first year, it would actually be higher, but it would decline more rapidly because it's a shorter term. And that's, you know, depend upon, who knows what a project like that would look like? You know, if it would be, if it would be done in stages, et cetera. And that's the town's responsibility, period. Uh, there is no reimbursement on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter?
No.
But I'd just like to say that this article will simply allow the Whitman Middle School building project to proceed to a ballot question to be ultimately decided by the voters at the special town election next Saturday, November 4th, 2023. Thank you.
Mr. Cullody?
Yeah, Dan Cullody for Locust Hill Lane. I just wanted to know, John Galvin, at one point before he resigned, had tried to get the auditorium to get pulled out, that would have saved 8.8 million, and go back to the six to eight on the grade level, which would have saved 11.6, which would be $20 million. Why didn't we go with that option or even debate it at that time? Curious, because I'm going from a $44,000, $4,400 when I first got here, I'm at $8,000. This will put me over $10,000 in tax, and that doesn't even count the, um, stuff coming down the pipe.
Mr. Small?
We had held a meeting in August to look at different options and to perhaps reconsider our vote. Uh, that motion did not carry, so it could not be reconsidered by the committee.
Ms. Howe?
Well, I remember my slogan was bringing...
Could you just please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Laura Howe, Whitman, um, 185 School Street, Whitman. My slogan was bringing town together, and, uh, maybe I shouldn't have chose politics, but I, um, want to address something. The messaging, um, has been very divisive, and I want you to know, my daughter does go to the middle school. The middle school I saw up there looks nothing like the school she goes to now. It might be kind of like Disney World, and I'd love for all of our children to have something so nice. I mean, my goodness, wouldn't we all? And there's people on both sides of this aisle probably that voted for me, and some may like me, some may not, after many decisions I make, and for that I apologize. But I hope and pray that we come together as a community and as a town, um, not looking at these pretty pictures, but thinking of each other, thinking of what our real needs are, like the gentleman stated, what our needs are down the pike, which are great, the challenges that we all have before us, and I can't speak of them because they're not on the ballot, but yet they're probably in the forefront of everyone's minds. When I make a budget, I make it to be what I can afford. Some people discuss $420,000 home, you know, that was probably like a dream of mine to have that home, but now I do. And to be honest, it's worth more than that. So what will that mean to my personal taxes will have to go with my personal vote. And that's basically my sentiment up here, is I work, well, with, hand in hand, with four very competent people. Um, I guess I'm the fifth wheel. And, um, we all make decisions individually. We're all here to represent all of you. And I hope that whether this gets on the ballot, gets voted, not voted, that we all reach out a hand to each other, because there is nobody in this town that does not like children, and there is nobody in this town that doesn't want what we can afford, and the voters will have to decide on what we can afford. So I hope that everybody takes that into consideration and finds out what your home is worth, and va, and then base that, because that would be a more true number, as well as your rent, because I can assure you, I don't know any landlords that will absorb any costs. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As with all Capitol articles, the Finance Committee has been regularly updated on the evolution of this project since it was first proposed. We are very fortunate to have our Vice Chair, Kathleen O'Teener, as a Finance Committee representative on the Building Committee. With this significant investment in the future of our community in this case, Kathleen has analyzed every aspect of the project budget. We take this opportunity to recognize the other members of the Building Committee as well, for their collective evaluation of the various options, MSBA grant process, and diligence to get this article before you tonight. Following lengthy discussion, the Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously. As a fellow taxpayer, I personally understand the impact this borrowing will have. I implore you, if you have any question on what the need is, to take a tour of the school. Even though I understood the full impact of the need to replace this school, I took a tour several weeks ago. I left with a profound appreciation for the dedicated teachers and administrators who show up every day to provide an educational experience in an antiquated and substandard facility. Our students and educators deserve something better. The time to act is tonight. I act that you, I ask that you join with the unanimous consensus of the Capitol Committee, School Committee, Building Committee, and the Finance Committee in support of this article. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Adriana De Stefano, 732 Plymouth Street. Um, can you hear me? Um, Mr. Small, just for clarification, um, the numbers on the repair are six zero to repair the school versus after grants 79 million?
76 million.
76 million, okay. So it's a $16 million difference.
It's a $16 million delta.
Thank you. All right, and, um, is this a time for questions or statements as well? I'd like to say something.
You have the floor?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to introduce myself as a graduate of the class of 2007 at Whitman Hanson. My class spent two years in the old high school and two years in the new school. Halfway through my time at Whitman Hanson, we entered the new school, and it was like someone turned the color on for our educational experience. Our classrooms were warm when they needed to be, and the elements stayed outside where they belonged. As the mom of a past and current student at Whitman Middle School, it saddens me to see similar conditions as the old Whitman Hanson, including water damage from leaks and weather, accessibility challenges, failing and insufficient facilities, and minimal opportunities for the arts. As it stands, our bands and chorus kids do not have an auditorium to practice and showcase their skills on their home turf as children in Hanson do. We are one district, and our children deserve better. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Elizabeth Dagnall, 316 School Street. I'm also the Chair of Whitman Education Alliance, which is a ballot question committee in support of this new building project. I wanted to comment and share my enthusiastic support for the project and for the Building Committee and many others who have been working hard on this since at least 2019. I also want to express gratitude to FinCom and the Capitol Committee for carefully examining this project and giving it their full unanimous support. I have spent many, many hours attending meetings and learning the complexities and details of this project, and supporting this build does not mean that I am not sensitive to the costs involved. My husband and I are a one full-time income family. We have a 13-year-old child who will never set foot in this school as a student, and we still wholeheartedly support this project. Since the inclusion of the auditorium in this building has been brought up, I'd like to comment and say that this is an educational issue, it's a mental health issue, and it's an equity issue. No one in this town would ever say to an athlete, "I know you like your sports, kids, but sorry, you don't get a gym, you don't get playing fields." And we must stop the narrative in this town that children who want to be involved in the arts don't deserve the venue in which to grow that interest. So I ask you to vote this onto the ballot tonight and get out to the polls on Saturday and vote yes.
Other discussion of Article 13. Mr. O'Teener?
Marshall O'Teener, 100 Lazell Street. Um, but I'd just like to make a quick point, actually to bring up something that our, one of our selectmen shared a couple of weeks ago, and it's really asking Whitman to not make the same mistakes that we've made in the past. In 1994, the district proposed a $30 million high school, which was voted down. Several years later, it was a $49 million high school that got approved. Uh, whereas the, and we just went through the same issue with the DPW. We had the DPW come up seven years ago, or almost 11 years ago, and we voted it down as a town, and we just had to come back up again for more money. This is our one chance to get this building at this price tag. There's no project in the future that comes in less than this. We can pay this now, or we can pay more in the future. Thank you.
Other discussion. Mr. Linum?
It's obvious from the comments that have been made and those, Frank Linum, Bedford Street, Whitman, sorry. It's obvious from the comments made and the folks that are sitting here that people are very passionate about how they feel about this project. There are 336 voters in this room right now. If we vote to approve this project to go to a ballot, there will be, hopefully, somewhere around 2,000 citizens of Whitman able to make that decision. I think we'd be a lot better off forwarding and giving a large part of the populace the opportunity to say yes or no. So I would urge that we move forward, bring it to a ballot, and then accept the decision of the town.
Yes, sir.
Donald Visser, 929 Washington Street. I'm up here not denying the need for a new school. Unfortunately, that school was not built on good land in the first place, so it never really got to its proper lifetime. So here we are, having to deal with a school that is falling down on us. My biggest concern tonight is the overall cost to a taxpayer, particularly people in my category, retired on fixed incomes. There's a lot of gray-haired people here tonight, and I'm sure some of them are thinking about that. It's a, it's an enormous jump when you talk about 1,200-plus dollars and then going down from there gradually. You've got a DPW bill that you're paying, we need that too. And then we'll have a town meeting, a regular town meeting, and there'll be additional appropriations. So the tax increase that you see per year right now certainly is going to be more than that in the long run. And so it's a huge jump for people in my situation and others. Sitting next to a lady that said to me, "I don't know how I'm going to pay this bill. It's going to be near impossible for me to stay in my home to do that." So I have a question for the Building Committee from this. I've been trying to follow this process along the way in the paper, and my wife attended a meeting at the Senior Center about it, particularly the concern of our building on the same bad land that that school is currently sitting on, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But here's the question. Along the way, there was a proposal to build, I think, if my memory serves me correct, somewhere in the $89 million category, not having a class, grade five in this school, which we don't have now. So we've maxed out on grade five accommodations in other schools, and I do not see the need in a middle school for having an auditorium. Having a gymnasium, absolutely. Having a fine cafeteria, fine. The reason, the reason I'm coming from that standpoint is that I'm a former teacher at South Shore Vo-Tech in Hanover. It has a tiny auditorium compared to this one, much, much smaller, and that came in an addition not too many years back. When we have a meeting with the kids, we go to the gym. There's plenty of seating for them. So this is a middle school. I do not see the need to go from an 89 million, if I'm kind of in the ballpark on that, to an auditorium and to adding a grade five. That would have been much more parallel to me if you had stayed at that kind of design. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
When we very first started, back when the word COVID meant nothing to anybody, or maybe some scientists, we were looking and discussing what the cost of a project would be, and we had a range of 50 to 80 million dollars. That was the original range back in 2019 in our discussions. Costs grew. Over the course of time, there were some decisions made, and I can appreciate the fact that you disagree with one of the decisions that the committee made. Some of us in the committee didn't agree as well, others of us did agree. The will of the committee was the auditorium in a five-through-eight as being the most educationally proper and sound project to be putting forward. Back then, and that was less than a year ago, in February, we had a cost estimator give us a projected cost of 67 to 73 million dollars, and that was the town share. That blew up, obviously, much higher. We were lucky we got additional funds from the state. We're at 76 million with $3 million off from what we thought we might be, so we're in good shape that way. As far as building on the property or the land, because everyone says it's a swamp, it's wet, et cetera, a 1972 graduate of Whitman Hansen, back in the old high school, back when the Portables, okay, is my brother-in-law, he's now since retired, but he's one of the most renowned geotechnical people, and he's considered a dam expert, and that's dam is the stuff that stops water. And he's supposedly the number one in the country. Heck, he's been over the Hoover Dam in a sling. As he told me, because I asked him that very same question right away, "You can build on anything. Heck, you can build on the ocean if you wanted to. It all depends on if you prepare the soil properly and what you do to mitigate it." This discussion was had with our architects. They have assured us that they know how to mitigate any of the wet areas, they know how to dig down deep enough, and they know how to set things so it's not going to be an issue. We don't intend to put a project together and give this town something it has to last for 50 years. Well, the heck with that. Let's make something that can last 100 years and do it the right way. That's what we're looking to do. Back in 1972, there was no regulations, it was the Wild West. If you go into that school, the one thing, whether you're for this project or against this project, I defy anybody to say, "We don't need another middle school," because we do. It's disgusting and it's despicable. Okay?
Ma'am? Ma'am, ma'am, you're right. Sir, if you want to go again, you have to let everybody who wants to speak first say whatever it is they want to say, and then we can get around to. Is you, you're following up on the first question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my, my question to you, two-part question was, why do we need a grade five to add to what isn't there at the current school? And why do we need an auditorium in a middle school?
People smarter than me, okay, and it's a debate, grade five, there are pros and there are cons, whether or not it's appropriate, not appropriate, et cetera.
Big spread in age, you know, from five to eight, grade eight. That's a big.
I understand that, and perhaps we'll have some administrators that can answer that question. For the auditorium, I'm going to let these folks back that up as well.
Mr. Farrow.
Hey, folks, George Farrow, 320 Harvard Street. I was the principal of the Whitman Middle School for 15 years. Some of you have heard this story before, I spent my whole life in a middle school. I was in the city of New Bedford at a grade seven and eight junior high. I was in this town of Westport at a grade five-to-eight middle school, the first year they became a five-to-eight, and then I spent 15 years at a six-to-eight at the middle school in Whitman. Now I'm an assistant superintendent, and those days were great that I had. When you talk about a five-to-eight, that's the age range of students who are 10 to 14 years old. If you look at the changes that take place in the human body and the changes that take place in the minds and feelings of students from 10 to 14, that encompasses your pre-teen and that encompasses your teen when you leave at about 14 years old. For those of you that are parents and for those of you that have children, you, your children leave you at 10, at fifth grade, and they are too old now for their elementary school years. If you talk about socialism, if you talk about social media, if you talk about any of that, the ages from 10 to 14 encapsulate the whole growth. You go from pre-puberty, you go from puberty, you go from being a young adult. If you remember, your kids probably didn't care for you much in seventh grade, probably didn't care for you much in eighth grade, hopefully they do come back and love you after that, but that age range from 10 to 14 should be together, and that's what research shows. I've spent my life in middle school, I was, I am, and always will be a proponent of the grades five to eight, and let's not, let's not forget, this is the town of Whitman, I live in the town of Whitman. Love it here. Best 17 years I've spent so far, 20 as a person who works for the town. But we are part of the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. So when you talk about the Whitman Hansen Regional School District, it is a five-to-eight, it's a five-to-eight middle school in Hansen. You might not agree with it, but it is. When you talk about the need for an auditorium, every student should have the ability to express themselves in the way that they are able to. That cannot take place in a cafeterium. I've seen a cafeterium every set of the way. But we should not deny our children the right as they're 10, 11, 12, and 13, and developing who they are, developing their skills, developing what they want to do. We have ballfields, we have turf, we have everything you could need, but every single student deserves the right to learn how to express themselves, whether that's poetry, whether that's music, whether that's band. And I think if we're going to come together and be one school district and one town, I think we deserve to give our students that opportunity.
Mr. Evans.
Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane. I was part of the class of 2008, so I also, like Adriana, got to experience both the old school and the new school. When I was in seventh and eighth grade in the current middle school, I was in the drama program, I'm not an athlete and really never have been, and I would take the bus up to the high school to join the high school drama program. Not a lot of students had that opportunity, I think there were only two of us that would, you know, take a bus to go participate in drama with the, the high school. This, to me, is an opportunity to kind of level the playing field, you know, my, my brothers and my sister were both athletes, were all athletes. They got to play, you know, sports in the school that they were in, and I had to take a bus right up to school, coordinate rides, me and Ian would have to figure out ways to get there and to get home. This, you know, it provides an opportunity that students in Hansen have, students at the high school have, students in a lot of surrounding communities have, and Whitman students don't. So thanks.
Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Heather Clough, 154 Beulah Street, and I just want to say that it's not just about an auditorium or fifth graders, but I have a special needs student who could not go to Whitman Middle because they could not meet his needs. There are enough students in the district who are out of district that it costs a million and a half a year. We could significantly reduce that talking to parents whose children have physical disabilities and cannot attend in the current building, and talking to parents whose students with emotional disabilities cannot. On top of that, no student deserves to have a specialty program forced into a former computer lab because people don't want to invest in their education. I don't know if most of you remember this, but it was about 2005, they voted against expanding the elementary special education program at Conley, and it's been dominoes ever since with more and more students going out of district. I can't say for sure that it's tied hand in hand, but it looks like it talking to a lot of parents, and it's not through the district's fault. It's through not having the space, not having the ability, not having the resources available to provide for children with additional needs. And we can save a lot of money on the, in the long run by bringing those students back into the community, and it's more beneficial, not just for them, but for also the other students who deserve to learn around their peers. Thank you.
Sir.
Matthew McKenzie, 49 Belmont Street. I'm a teacher at Silver Lake Regional Middle School, and I can attest to the value of an auditorium. I've gone to about a dozen productions, middle school productions at our middle school, as well as about a half dozen band or chorus events. My son is right over there, he's three and a half years old, William, and he's looking at a, he's waiting to go to bed over there. But I don't know what he's going to like when he gets older. I have no idea yet. He might want to be a drama kid, he might want to be in band, I really don't know. I know he likes running around, he likes dressing up as Batman and The Flash, he likes all sorts of stuff. Again, he's malleable at this point, he could be anything. I'm really hoping that we give the opportunities to all the kids in town that don't know what they want to do yet, that this is a viable option, that when they get older, there's a, hopefully, premier program of either band or drama in the school, so they can make that decision based off what's available. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
Can we move to a vote?
We have a motion to move the question, we have a second on that? All in favor of cutting off debate by moving, moving to the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
No.
Okay, the, the ayes have it. So we will move to a vote on Article 13. All in favor of Article 13, say yes.
Yes.
Pose no.
No.
Article 13 is adopted.
Article 14, DPW Building Project, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,143,271.15 to pay additional costs of the Department of Public Works Building Project, so-called, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether such amounts shall be raised by transfer from excess funds originally borrowed or appropriated to pay costs of various other capital projects or take any other action relative thereto. And there's a motion that $1,143,271.15 is hereby appropriated to pay additional costs of the Department of Public Works Building Project, so-called, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, $729,414.2 shall be transferred from excess amounts originally borrowed to make water system improvements related to the intersection improvements at the intersections of Routes 18, 14, and 27, as authorized under Article 2 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on December 11, 2017. $68,855.10 shall be transferred from excess amounts originally appropriated to pay costs of sewer easement surveying and testing, as authorized under Article 4 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on December 11, 2017. $14,801.96 shall be transferred from excess amounts originally appropriated to pay costs of repairs to sewer force mains, as authorized under Article 5 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on December 11, 2017. $36,000 shall be transferred from excess amounts originally appropriated to pay costs of a permanent mount generator for the Belcher Drive Sewer Pumping Station, as authorized under Article 15 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on May 6 and June 17, 2019. And $294,207.17 shall be transferred from excess amounts originally appropriated to pay costs of engineering and consulting services for the replacement of the sewer force main connecting the town sewer system to the Brockton Advanced Waste Water Reclamation Facility, as authorized under Article 4 of the warrant at the special town meeting held on December 2, 2019. Do we have a motion on, on that motion? I have a second. Discussion of Article 14. Yes, sir.
Kimball, 877 Opener Way. Can somebody explain why we have a $2.2 million increase? That's about an 8% increase over what we just voted nine, six months ago.
Is that related? Mr. Martin.
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave, also DPW Highway Superintendent. So when we went through the planning process of this building, we got our architectural firm and a company, a firm that all they do is municipal building estimates, they came through with an estimate, so then we went out to bid, and when we went out to bid, the estimates, the, the low bid was still that much higher than what we appropriated at town meeting. Some of that was due to some soil conditions at the, at the DPW yard, some of it was due to just inflation, and it, it's across the board, it's happened into a lot of municipal projects. They do their best, they, they're in the business of estimating these big projects, and they were both low on their estimates, and they thought they were bidding hot, they had contingency built in. So, you know, the town already appropriated 17.8. We need these additional funds to go forward to build the building. The Water and Sewer Superintendent has, you know, gone back and looked at the books and had some projects that were finished, and there was, that's what was read off right here. You know, Route, Route 14 and 27 projects, the Route 18 projects, those, those water main projects came in under, all these other projects came in under, so that's where these monies are going to be voted for. It's just, it's the market.
Mr. Lado.
I know I spoke to you earlier, Bruce, but still, I have a question that I, I assume is related to this. Why is it taking so long from 2017, we're in 2000, almost the end of 2023? Why is it taking so long for all this money to be finally coming back, and it's doing nothing for the taxpayers' rights?
So I could have the Water and Sewer Superintendent speak to that, that... So I could have the Water and Sewer Superintendent speak to that, that on highway, these were water sewer projects. But I will say, these funds that were voted for these projects came, even though they were town meeting articles, they come out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise account. So if I were to do an article for, from the Highway Division, and I wanted to buy a dump truck, if I was to do an article for the Highway Division to, say, purchase a new dump truck, and after we bought the dump truck, it came in at five thousand dollars under the estimate that was voted at town meeting, that five thousand dollars would go back to the general fund of the town. Whereas with water and sewer projects, the money is coming from Water and Sewer Enterprise, and the money goes back to Water and Sewer Enterprise. It doesn't go back to the general fund. So it would be just, it would be available to be spent on other water sewer projects, but not other town projects.
I'm sorry to be picking on you, but most of the monies tonight are coming from unexpected, unextended funds from two thousand and sixteen forward?
Sir?
Dennis Smith, two fifty, Stetson Street. I'm the former Water and Sewer Superintendent for the Whitman DPW, just retired. So as Mr. Martin said, anything that is appropriated in water sewer and doesn't get spent, goes right back into water sewer by leaving it in the articles that are mentioned. It's still water and sewer money. If there is a similar problem that fits within the language of the, of the article, that money can be still used. At some point, though, certain articles, they're very specifically worded, and there's nothing more you can do. The intersection money, you know, there was a point there, we were trying to think about maybe adding some emergency power supplies to the lights there. We have to, the Highway Department has to put out manual four-way stop signs when they have power outages. It was looked into it, we didn't do it, you know, so that kind of loosened, pretty much everything at the intersection, you know, we're done with, can't think of anything else that we need to can improve in the state intersections. So it made sense to turn the money back in. And same with the other projects is, you know, we changed the generator, what we're going to do with the generators at Belcher Drive, instead of using an onsite after the survey done there, it was discovered that the permanent easement did not allow an adequate space to, you know, construct a permanent generator there. So instead, we went to a tow behind system there. And pretty much the, every article here, the language is, we've done all we can with it, and there's, it's time to close them out.
So why can't any of these excess funds be given back to the taxpayers and lower the water rates that just went up a dollar fifty a cubic foot?
As far as giving it back to, it's not taxes, it's water and sewer rates. It could be used to lower sewer, water and sewer rate. Instead, it was, it not would matter, you know, individually, they would not make much of a difference. You know, they're coming up to, to try and make a combination here to do something as far as the underbudgeting of the, of the building.
Anderson?
So the Finance Committee's recommendation printed in the warrant is based on a comprehensive evaluation of this project. We respectfully ask town meeting to support this article and the one that will follow, so that the town can move forward with meeting a major objective in our strategic plan. We believe that using surplus funds from the five DPW-related previous expenditures and the upcoming proposal to use Plymouth County ARPA funds is a fiscally prudent way to close the funding gap for the new DPW facility. As a member of the current DPW Building Committee, I have updated the Finance Committee as this project has progressed through the bidding process. There are two basic reasons for the escalation in the cost for this facility. One is the scope of the soil conditions, and the other is the effect of the post-pandemic construction market. There is little we can do to offset the economic effect of either of these conditions. The Building Committee has pared down the scope of this facility to balance the economic impact to taxpayers with the need to construct something that will last for the next fifty years. I am not someone who dwells in the past. However, I did serve on the Building Committee that evaluated and presented a proposal to replace this outdated facility eleven years ago. An eleven million dollar investment in two thousand and twelve would have smoothed out our debt schedule, and we would have been well on our way to our next major capital investment. I urge you to support this article so we don't make this same mistake again. Thank you.
Mr. Linham? We have a motion to move the question, we have a second? All right, all in favor of moving to a vote, say yes?
Yes!
Oppose, no? All right. Let's proceed to a vote then on Article fourteen. All in favor of Article fourteen, say yes?
Yes!
Oppose, no?
No!
Article fourteen is adopted. Article fifteen, DPW Building Project, to see if the town will appropriate two million, two hundred thousand dollars to pay additional costs of designing, constructing, and equipping a new Department of Public Works Building, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any other action relative thereto. And there's a motion that the town appropriate two million, two hundred thousand dollars to any additional costs of designing, constructing, and equipping a new Department of Public Works Building, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven-one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. While the bonds and notes issued under the authority of this vote will be general obligations of the town payable from all sources of revenue, it is the town's intent to pay debt service in the first instance from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
And a second. Discussion of Article fifteen. Ms. Landville?
Someone explain what debt service is?
Ms. Carter?
And Mr. Moderator, do we have enough people to vote? We are, everybody's getting up and bailing?
We do.
So the debt service would be the debt payments that will come due for this borrowing. The seventeen point eight million dollars was done as a debt exclusion, so that went into the taxes. This two-point-two million will not be a debt exclusion, but we will still have the debt payment to pay each year, and it will be paid through rates. But let me just explain that this article represents a borrowing authorization requested for the new DPW Building Project in the amount of two million, two hundred thousand dollars. To offset this borrowing amount, the DPW was able to reduce the total amount that we need to borrow for the sewer force main project. The town has the ability to use ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, for certain types of projects, and the town's sewer force main project is one of the eligible projects. The DPW Building Construction was not an eligible project. If this article is approved, the total increase in rates will be seventy cents for the second half of the sewer force main project and this two-point-two million dollars for the DPW. Originally, we pulled, the DPW pulled the notice from the water bill that went out October fifteenth. The notice had said that an increase was expected of a dollar twenty-five. But that is not the case now, because we are applying two-point-two in ARPA funds, and the sewer force main project came in under budget. And I believe that was mainly due to a grant that we received for paving. So the sewer force main project came in under budget, so the total cost for the two-point-two million for the DPW and the rest of the debt payment that we need to come up with for the sewer force main comes in at seventy cents instead of the dollar twenty-five originally planned.
So it's going up seventy cents?
It was going up a dollar twenty-five.
Yeah.
Now it's only going up seventy.
On top of the dollar fifty per cubic foot, we just got hit.
The dollar fifty was last year, that's correct, and they had planned a dollar twenty-five. And this is when the article was voted. It was a dollar fifty, and they expected a dollar twenty-five. So the dollar fifty has taken place, and instead of a dollar twenty-five, it will be seventy cents. And that breaks out at ten cents for the sewer force main project on sewer rates, and then thirty cents on sewer rates, and thirty cents on water rates for the two-point-two million for the DPW debt.
Sir, please wait to be recognized. If you have a question, please ask to be recognized.
Right, a debt exclusion, the debt dies when the debt ends. But this will be increased for the water rates, and that will become part of the base rate.
So indefinitely?
Ken, do you have? The accountant did these calculations, so I'd just like him to speak to that. When you did the calculations, is that for the life of the debt?
Ken Littell, one thirty-seven Warren Ave, previous accountant and current treasure collector here in Whitman. I ran through part of the analysis that led to the increase in the water sewer rates for this project, contributing to the dollar fifty increase that was done previously, taking prior year sewer collections to try to estimate where the revenue we would get from the sewer and water rates going forward to see what we would need. And in doing that, I saw that the dollar twenty-five increase for the second round was going to be too much, based on the new cost of the debt service that is coming in for the force main. So instead of the dollar twenty-five, it's only going to be forty cents for sewer rates and thirty cents for water rates, as opposed to the dollar twenty-five from before. And so this is based on what we had previously collected, based on the dollar, and based on the dollar fifty impact that we got from the first sewer rate and the money that was brought in.
Other comments on Article fifteen. Mr. Linham?
Just to respond to the previous comment, the rate increase that we saw last year was entirely related to the cost of replacing the force sewer main, had nothing to do with this project.
Other questions, comments on Article fifteen? Yes, sir?
Why wasn't this?
Can you please identify yourself, please?
Steve Maluski, thirty-five Allen Place. Why wasn't this DPW, why wasn't this put on a ballot, like on the November fourth ballot, to give, instead of three hundred people to vote on it, give the whole two thousand people that might show up for a town vote to vote for it? Why, why wasn't it structured that way with the town people, that all the taxpayers in town had a chance to vote on it? I don't understand why, why it wasn't set up like that for the town to vote on it?
Ms. Carter?
This two-point-two million dollar borrowing is not a debt exclusion, therefore it does not go on a ballot. This is being supported by rates. It's unlike the first borrowing, the seventeen point eight million, that was a debt exclusion, and so that did need to go to a ballot, but the two-point-two is not a debt exclusion. So tax, real estate taxes will not go up for this.
What part of this twenty million dollars was debt exclusion?
Seventeen point eight, the article that was voted last year.
Where, where was it, where was the vote, in town hall here with three hundred people?
No, it was at town meeting, and then it also went to a ballot question, the town election.
The Fourth of July ballot, is that it?
No, May. The regular annual May town election.
Oh, it wasn't the Fourth of July, it was in May?
May.
Oh, okay. But the thing of it is, is that it's not being feared to the taxpayers in town to not fully advertise that what was involved in that ballot, okay? You had it, like this, this ballot that's coming up?
Mm-hmm.
This vote is on November fourth, and that was in May, when, when was it in May?
May twentieth, I believe, it was. It's always the third Saturday, I believe, in May.
People, you know, that, the way that, the way that that was done, it's not right for the taxpayers in Whitman. It should have been much more advertised than had it, had it done in that manner, where people knew what was going on.
The town always would put a debt exclusion voted at the annual town meeting on the annual town election in May.
How much was that exclusion?
Seventeen million, eight hundred thousand for the DPW? And it was one of the questions when everybody came in to vote?
Now, we're going to pile on, we're going to pile on the debt from the, from the DPW onto the school debt, and, you know, it comes up, what is it, like fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars for a, for a year on more taxes to do the whole thing?
That's, I think you're speaking about the two-part, what is the first year on the middle school? I believe it was, and then the DPW, correct?
The ARPA comes up to like sixteen hundred something.
The first year, only the first year. They declined from there.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans? We have a motion to move the question, we have a second?
Second!
All in favor of moving to a vote on Article fifteen, say yes?
Yes!
Oppose, no? The motion carries. All in favor of Article fifteen, say yes?
Yes!
Oppose, no?
No!
The, the article passes with a two-thirds majority. Okay? We can, if we can do a standing vote, if people want to do that. Should we do that? Okay, we'll do a standing vote then. All in favor, all in favor of Article fifteen, please stand. The tellers would please count. Seventy-seven? Do we have a count from the balcony? I'm sorry? Seventy-four. All right. All right, please be seated then, and all opposed, please rise.
Zero?
Zero. Three. In the balcony? One. Okay, I think we have our two-thirds majority there for the handling. What's the count? So the count is, yes in favor, two hundred thirteen, no, four. So the article is adopted. We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second. All in favor, say yes?
Yes!
Oppose, no? No nos. We're adjourned.